Needing to order, this time I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Lee.
Commissioner Godwin is going to have our invocation and our pledge tonight.
Yes, let us pray. My soul in Almighty God, we come this evening to say thank you for how good you've been. Father God, we need you, your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding. We thank you how you have blessed Sampson County. So Father God, we ask that you continue to put your hands, your love, your kindness, armed around us, that we have the wisdom to do what we need to do with the people. Thank you for those, Lord, that have encouraged others to be able to do all that you have us to do. We thank you now, Lord, for those that's in the audience, watch over them, keep them. And then as we walk this walk, Lord, we want to do everything that's right in your sight. You've been so good, so awesome to us. And all we want to say is thank you to guide us, direct us in the right pathway of life. You are the light unto our feet and a lamp into our pathway. We give you glory and honor now, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Let us stand for the pledge. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin and Vice Chair Lee. Okay, this time, if the agenda's clear, I'll accept a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the agenda as published.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, it's unanimous. All right, we'll go to reports and presentation of Ms. Oaks Mobley. We'll call you forward.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to share two pieces of information. We're starting a rebranding initiative for our department, Sampson Area Transportation. After discussions with the Transportation Advisory Board, it's evident that renaming the service to Sampson County Public Transportation would benefit both the residents of Sampson County and the department itself. Currently, there is a lack of awareness regarding the services that we provide and the availability of public transportation throughout the county. Many are unaware that these services are managed under the local government system. To address this, we would like to move forward with the name change that more accurately reflects our services, and we will also be enhancing the department's visibility by featuring eye-catching graphics on 11 new vehicles that are, we are currently taking delivery of. The rebranding effort aims to improve accessibility, increase ridership, and ultimately better serve the community as a whole. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Well, that is a very nice-looking vehicle. I like that. The logo looks good, yes.
It does look nice. Any comments?
One other piece of information that I wanted to share, we are going to be hosting the first, hopefully, annual Eastern Region Rodeo for the transportation drivers on May 18th at the Expo Center. It is a skills test. It's an obstacle course for our drivers. There will be five other counties participating. They will all compete against each other, and my hope is that the high scorer from Sampson County next year can go with me to the state conference and participate at the state level. Kind of a big thing in the transportation world, not a lot of people know about it, but when we go to the state level, the winners at the state level in the competition is very tough, but the winners at the state level can then go to a national rodeo, and they receive cash prizes and get the recognition that they deserve. So that is May 18th. We'll start at about 8:30, and I did include a flyer. You should, everybody should have a little flyer with some of the information on it, and we hope that you can join us that day.
Sounds very interesting. As time goes along, remind us.
I will, I sure will.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. This time, we'll open the public hearing, and Ms. Lance?
Good evening. Case number R 2305 was addressed by the planning board at their February 12th, 2024 meeting. It's a rezoning request submitted by Murphy Property Solutions LLC to rezone tax parcel This is a 10.6 acre located on U.S. Highway 701, and the parcel is currently zoned residential ag, and the applicant is requesting to rezone that to commercial, to the commercial district. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning request due to the property's frontage along a major thoroughfare, access to public water, and proximity to existing commercial uses based on the following, and based on the following zoning consistency statement. The Sampson County Planning Board finds the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the rural residential land use designation and to positively align with the main purpose and intent of such designation. The Sampson County Planning Board finds that the rezoning request is reasonable and is in best public interest and all other permitted uses included in the commercial zoning district are reasonable and in best public interest, and recommends approval to the Sampson County Board of Commissioners. The Sampson County Planning Board finds the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the land use plan.
Okay, does anyone have any question? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I move that we rezon the property as recommended by the planning board and adopt the following zoning consistency statement as written.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, approve.
Thank you.
Very much. All right, we'll open another public hearing, and Mr. Clack, Ms. Daniels?
Good evening. I am Tammy Daniels, and I am from the Adams Company. We are the company that administered your Sampson County Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization Program. And tonight is the required public hearing to close it out because we have finished that project, and I'm here to just give you the update on that so you can know what you accomplished with this project. It proposed four reconstruction properties, and due to two of them either declining or becoming ineligible, we had to do a program amendment. With that amendment, it then became three reconstructions, and then we brought one up to standards. It was a rehabilitation. So the project ended up doing, it still did four homes, but we reconstructed three and did one as a rehabilitation. This project was funded with $750,000, and we only, we spent almost all of it, but the total amount spent was $740,694.60, meaning we deobligated $9,305.40. And 100% of this project did go to LMI persons.
Okay, does anyone have any comments or questions? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, at this time, Mr. Green, we'll call you up.
Well, thank you. Like I say, my name's Wade Green. I'm from White. Well, I think you've got a copy of the audit. I'll let you read that at your convenience. I've got my little chart here, a few graphs. I guess you've got a copy, should have. With that being said, if you just flip over to page two. For compliance with the requirements of OMB Uniform Guidance and the State Single Audit Implementation Act, the county administered over 22 million in federal and state grants for '23, and my results of compliance testing give zero instances of non-compliance and zero deficiencies in internal control. So you had a clean single audit. Any questions on that one? That's a good one, a good one. Your next one, your financial highlights. Your assets and your deferred outflows of resources exceeded your liabilities and deferred inflows of resources by $111.9 million. Your total net position or net income, if you will, increased by $18.3 million last year. Now, this is full accrual with debt, depreciation, et cetera. That's the first two statements in the audit report, but this is really not how you keep your books, your own cash basis, and that's the rest of them. Any questions on that one?
Any question?
If not, flip the page. Your general fund. Your revenues for the year at $90.488 million. Your expenses at $86.5 million. Revenues over expenses, $3.9 million. As you can see, you had a $2 million loss last year. This year, you got a $3.9 million income. Now, that's before transfers, et cetera, but after expenses, $3.9 million income for the year.
Interesting. All right, keep the good news coming.
The next one, fund balance available. This is cash in the bank after you pay your bills at year end. At year end, you have $37.57, 500, $37,577,000. You had $29.6 million last year. You have $37.5 this year, so you have almost about $12 million from last year in fund balance available. As you can see, it's steadily been going up from 20 million in 2018. You have $37 now. Any questions on that one?
That's a good thing, right?
Oh, yeah. Well, if you take the $37 million, divide it by the prior charts expenses, you get the next graph, fund balance available as percentage of expenditures. You have 43.44%. So you got what, basically about four, I mean, five months worth of cash on hand at year end, based on that. Most counties in that 30 to 40%, so you've got a good fund balance available. This is one the LGC likes to look at, so what's that percentage? Any questions on that one? But all of your general funds in good shape? The next one, the Water and Sewer District Two. Revenues, almost $2.9 million. Your expenses, 2.3. Of revenues over expenditures, $542,879. So that one's got positive. The next one, the fund balance available. Almost $6.8 million. You were at $6.6 million last year. See it, what, $150,000 in the current year? As you can see, go back three years ago, you were well below, so... The percentage on that one, 288.59%. So you got, you're getting close to three years' worth of cash on hand at year end. So Water District Two's in good shape. Normally 25 to 35% is kind of what we see in Water and Sewer Districts, but you at 288, good shape. The next one, Water and Sewer District One. Revenues a little over a million, too. Your expenses, $932,000. Revenues over expenditures, $271,646. As you can compare it to past six years, it's in excellent shape. The fund balance available, at year end, 2.2 million. You were at 1.9 last year, so you had what, $300,000 for prior year? The next one, the percentage. 238.01. You were at 221 last year. Anyway, you've got almost two, two years and four or five months' worth of cash on hand at year end, so it's in excellent shape. The next one, district total cash reconciled, the governmental funds, 70.7 million at year end. Enterprise at 9.7 million. As you can see, they've all been increasing, so getting better and better.
Doing something right.
The next was long-term debt. Your debt in your governmental funds at 140.7 million. It was 132 million last year. The biggest thing about this is your elders retirement, where that have an actuarial study, is based on the market at 123121. The market was down, so they've got it valued way up. I think your governmental funds went up about $14 million for the elders retirement system. And enterprise funds, about $3 million, I think it was. Anyway, that's the big reason that it's up. Any questions on that one? Other than that one, that's the major things on your debt. The next, next one, your net tax limit, 43, almost 43.9 million. You were at 42.5 last year. See it, what, a million three in tax billings for the current year? As you say, it's steadily been going up. The next one, your collection rate. Oh, excuse me. Your valuation, 5,318 million. You were 5,318 million last year. See it, what, about $150 million in tax billings, the order value. The next one, your collection rate, 97.68% for the current year. That's kind of standard for everyone here in the southeast, this side of 95. If you get around Green Borough and stuff, they like 99s and .5s and better. I guess that's west of 95. I can't explain that one, don't ask me, and the beaches, so... But anyway, they kind of hit us to high spots. Have any questions?
When you have positive numbers, it's hard to have questions. Anyone have any question? Mike, you got a comment at all?
Just to say that our department heads continue to do a very good job in watching their expenditures, a good reason for what we gained this year in fund balances due to them not spending some, even though another good portion of it is due to vehicles that weren't delivered that we're having to pay for this year, so...
We're going to take a ding on it then.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Green? We appreciate it, thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you.
I didn't have questions, but I thought it was very interesting. I spent a great little time going over the audit this weekend, and I think it bears very well that we had $22 million in federal and state grants, and they were all passed clean, no deficiencies, no noncompliance. Everything was a good, clean audit, and that speaks highly. And I want to say my appreciation, show my appreciation for the staff that work so hard and manages our money so well. Our revenues were 1.9 million more than last year, and as David was saying, our expenses were 11, I'm sorry, that was 1.9 million. Expenses were 11 million less. That is huge for our department heads to work so hard, and they're cognizant of our budget situation. I really, really appreciate the hard work they do, and I like that our tax collection rate is remaining steady. I just liked just about everything about it, except the long-term debt, but I was happy to see that the debt was reduced by 2.525 million last year. That's...
Yeah, the actual amount we borrowed went down, but our liabilities did go up because of the retirement liabilities.
Like I said, when you have positive numbers, it's hard to have...
And that retirement number was what, 18 million? Was that what it was, that that was our yearly contribution? That is huge. That's a huge commitment. That was a little bit of a concern, but all in all...
Well, that's nothing that, that's the states, the state manages every bit of that for us, and they just tell us what our liability is, and of course, that's why they update the retirement amount we have to pay in each year because they're taking that into account to get it to be, have the resources to pay retirement to our employees as they retire.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Green. We appreciate the good news. Come back anytime. All right, we'll move on to board appointments. Vice Chair Lee?
I think, Mr. Chairman, you, the board typically votes to approve.
Oh, we have to approve this group.
You generally approve the audit subject to the local government commission's approval.
Okay, we'll accept the motion at this time. Approval?
Make a motion, not approval of a...
Audit?
Audit at this time.
Second. All in favor? All right, we passed unanimously. Hard to turn that down. Okay. Vice Chair Lee, we'll turn it over to you.
I move that we appoint Jim Demay, Director of Public Safety at Sampson Community College, to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I move that we appoint Lynn Fields and J.W. Simmons to represent Sampson County in the local regional advisory board for Trillium Health Resources. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
All right, thank you. All right, the consent agenda, if y'all have time, chance to look at it. If you approve it, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All right, got a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. That brings us to our county managers' report.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a lot to say. I would like to, not only do I share your view of what David and his staff and the departments have done relative to the audit, but I think this is also a pretty good reflection on the leadership that our Board of Commissioners offices offers on a daily basis, daily basis, daily bread. When you look at the fact that we had no material weaknesses in compliance on all of that, I think that's a pretty good indication that we have kind of followed the mandate of trying to be very careful with the expenditures. Is there room for improvement? Sure there is, but at the same time, I think a lot of people have done a remarkable job. I will also share with you, particularly on the art money, we have used a little bit of that money, or a small portion of it, for operating expenses that the board has approved. But unlike some other units, we have tried to maintain the emphasis on infrastructure and expending those funds for items that we can get long-term capital benefits from, and I think that will speak well now and in the future, and probably will go toward being a pretty good legacy for this board of how you have received federal money and how you've asked it to be expended. So thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. All right, that brings us to the public comment section. Ms. Hunt, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
Elaine Hunt, 7171 O. Warsaw Road, Turkey, North Carolina. I know you know why I'm up here. Been here coming since 2022. Feel like we're family now, in some ways, and in some ways I do not. I heard that it's never a wrong time to do the right thing. The right thing is to help and assist those who have put you where you are at this moment. We, like the others down our road, desire to have county water. I have brought you all samples of the water. I have brought you a copy of the petition of people who desire to have county water. I have brought you copies of my washing machine inside after I washed a load of clothes. Now I bring to you a new towel that I just washed. If you can see, you can see stains on it, brown, discolored water, after I wiped my washing machine. This is what I got. We need county water, people. We need county water. I think it's the right thing to do. I don't think you all are hearing me. I think you see me, but I think what I'm saying is falling on deaf ears, and that is so discouraging because of, you wouldn't be where you are if people such as myself would not have voted for you to help look after us, and we need county water. I've been told that there are grants that you all know about or you can research and find out about, and I've had some come to me and tell me not to give up hope, but it seems hopeless, but I will keep coming. And before I leave, Ian, I have another problem. Now I have chickens and rabbits and dogs coming back and forth in my yard. I have called the animal control. I've called Sheriff Thornton, I talked to him this afternoon, and I don't hold it against him. He said there's no place to store chickens and rabbits, and there's no funding. I don't know what needs to be done, but if I wanted chickens and rabbits, I think I could go out and buy them for myself. I don't want other neighbors' chicken and rabbits coming in my yard and staying in my yard and making messes that I have to clean up. So to the addition of our desire and we desire, and all who are in support of what I'm saying, if you'll stand up, if, and as well as county water, I want something done about that.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Boss of minds?
I'm back. I want to piggyback on what the young lady just said. I have other issues that I care not to discuss at this moment, but next month's meeting, I will be discussing them. One of the things I would like to submit to the board is, as I stated last month, how does one get on these boards? I asked the vice chair, and I have filled, there isn't an application. You have to call, and I spoke to Ms. Shannon about it, and she got my information, and you have a citizen who's willing to get on a board, and for whatever reason, I cannot get on a board. And so that is a major issue, one that I would like to address tonight, is how does one get on this board, or these boards that I continue to see availability, but I have not been contacted concerning a board? And so that's one of my concerns. Another concern is, as I believe is vitally important, is the fact of the matter that I believe by my, since I've been attending, is that there is a loss, there's, there's, there's a loss of touch with your constituents. Why does one have to come and beg for water when water is a necessity? We heard what the budget was and so on and so forth, and water is a vital component for living and sustaining life. Clean water is vitally important for every citizen. It tends, in this situation, I have water, I have clean water, and for those who do not, it would seem to me if you have the availability or the desire to want to help your fellow constituents, you will make a way. I also see that there's a disconnect also with the concerns that citizens brings to your attention from the time that I've been coming and observing, and once again, you may have forgotten a lost touch with the people who are out here this evening, and that's a shame. And so the definition of insanity is if you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you always got. And it's apparent at this moment in time, what we have gotten is not what is desired or nor wanted for the community and for Sampson County advancing onward and upward into prosperity, and prosperity does not mean necessarily people's salaries in the sense of whatever they may be. It means that all of us go together, not just one of us, but all of us. Remember that. Y'all have a good evening.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Fason, James Fason?
Good evening. My name is James Fason. My address is 393 Eastern Frederick Road, Magnolia, North Carolina. But I'm a former resident of Sampson County. I lived on Old Warsaw Road until I left for the military, and so I can feel what these people feel with this water thing. I went through that in Duplin County up to about 15 years ago, but now I have county water for the last 15 years. So I know things can be done to get these people water. You know, we have a tendency that it takes a special person to feel for other people. Now, if it's for you or your family, if you need something done, you'll get it done. But when it's somebody else, you're not going to, a lot of times, we know it's human nature, a lot of times, people are not going to make the extra effort to get stuff accomplished. But you've seen sample of water that these people are experiencing. How would you like to experience that, have family members? to experience that, have family members of you have that same kind of water? I know what it's like because I've had it. And it's not, it's not any fun. Rust in the back of your toilet, in your washing machine, smelling sulfur. It's not fun. So only these people's asking that, you know, like they said, there's a lot of grants out there. And one thing this country is good is about helping others. We get clean water to other people in other countries. So you tell me we can't get water for people that's paying taxes that live here? I just ask you to put yourself in their place. Put your family members in their place and see what, how you feel or what you want somebody else to do. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Reynolds?
Lynn Reynolds, 1435 Holleran Road, Dunn, North Carolina. I'm here tonight to encourage all the registered voters that have not voted to get out and vote tomorrow. Each year, the county and state employees are required to have their work performance evaluated. The voters will have the opportunity to evaluate the work performance of the county commissioners for two districts tomorrow. The results at the ballot box will also be an indicator of how the board as a whole is doing in the eyes of the voters in regards to the management of the local government. The pandemic was a challenging time, but one silver lining was government grants that allowed our county to install additional infrastructure and upgrade some buildings, including a new 911 and EMS facility. I have a mailman that throws my mail, but I recently got a car from Mr. Kivitz campaign highlighting what this board has accomplished, even though I live about eight miles away from his district. I agree with most of the items of accomplishments on his campaign ad. This board has done a pretty good job of supporting initiatives presented by the county staff on the needs of the county. There have been some questionable decisions by this board, however. The trash user fee was ill-advised. The timing was a shake-my-head moment to mention right before election time, right before Christmas time, and right before the tax deadline. It was also, the tax department was asked to collect these items, and the people where I live thought it was a tax. They said the tax collector collects taxes. It was a user fee, so call it what you will. Then GFL stepped up to absorb the cost of $2.2 million fee for the service. My question is, will GFL be looking for a return on their investment in the future? This, this water is a little muddy from where I'm sitting. The county completed a much-needed pay study in which commissioners supported by giving all the employees a 4% COLA. They then decided to give the highest-paid employee a 10% pay raise. That's another shake-my-head moment. The county settled a lawsuit with the sheriff's department. The county paid the plaintiffs around $17,000, according to newspaper. The cost of the lawsuit ended up costing $300,000 of taxpayer money. The plaintiffs got a little over $800 each. The attorneys were the real winners in this event of the $300,000 of our tax money. The losers in this case were the taxpayers. You can check on the facts and get out and vote tomorrow. Encourage everybody to use this to decide how to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. All right. That ends our public comment section. I think that's all that's on the agenda. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?